Oh, thank you, sweetness.
I think we have another minute. A quick question. The land that was hosted, how come there's different places or requests for deposits? Or starting bids, however you label that, if you remember.
Shouldn't be, I went through it. Should be $500 deposit on each one. $200 and 200 minimum. And 500 for legal. But it's not due for another month, so if I...
Yeah, might have to check.
Somebody else pointed out a question today. And I was expecting to have to do. Also, I want to like questions to come in by the 23rd so that I could give the same answers to everybody, so everybody would know.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, no, I did it once, locked up the document, then I wrote over it with another name, then I went back and did it again.
Yeah.
I was having fun.
So one, they're not the same, just so that you know.
Okay. Well, you should.
Yep. Okay, perfect.
Yes, under my com and also number three.
How are you doing, Matt? You ready?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah?
Ready when you are. You're the boss.
No, 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 no.
We know where we stand.
Oh.
Now they're... They must want something.
I don't know.
Yeah, no, I'm all set.
The gloves are on, I guess, right? Okay.
Not a chair, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're large.
All right. Welcome to November 1st Board of Selectmen meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so our first item on the agenda is public comments. Do we have any public comments? Okay. All right, then we'll move on to announcements and community calendar. We have the Milton Mills volunteers and businesses will be holding a holiday stroll on Saturday, November 27th between 12 noon and 5:00 PM in the Milton Mills Village. Folks are encouraged to stroll along the sidewalks, co-mingle, be merry, and also hopefully shopping locally for some of their holiday needs. And another item that's coming up on November 6th, this Saturday, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM is the Christian Crafters Christmas Fair at the Milton Townhouse. There'll be crafts, gifts, and baked goods, all sponsored by the Covenant Baptist Church, and all proceeds to benefit local charities and churches. All right. Great, we're gonna move on to new business and item one, appointment of school board. Do we have any of the candidates that would like to speak? On this behalf?
I'm ready, Larry. I'm gonna go first. Yeah. That I will break the ice and I will give you these. You, if I'm lucky, will get two as one you can pass on to Althea. Althea, as we've had that discussion.
Oh, I thought this was a microphone. Tunnel vision, okay, thank you.
It's separate, guys, my hands are still cold. And... So, thank you. Talking about feasibility. You can review this at your leisure. It works for everyone. And it doesn't matter who gets chosen for the school board. Last week, you will find comments on feasibility goals. I doubt if anyone can see this at home, but is this microphone working conveniently? That what I did, for a long time, I have tried to work cooperatively with about every board and committee that has come along. Andy, you will remember our work together on the Budget Committee. You also remember when the library hit a hard patch. Claudine, you will know how we worked to smooth out issues with the task force on issues in local government. And Matt, you know how we worked on the CIP. Most interesting thing here, I don't know if you can see it from behind me, if you think of that famous dog collar of shame, giant hood that fits over his head, then draw a smaller cone inside it and a laser going out from the center. And those are the three things you get on issues. You get what you do know, the things that you can find out, and on the outside, where Althea comes in, the things that you don't know, and you don't know if you know them or you don't. That's where the school board is. They're talking about moving out to a new district, talking about reinvigorating Newt itself, and less importantly, talking about issues of which side of the board are you on for masking or not masking. For myself, Newt is either a pile of bricks or a community treasure. When the townhouse was in danger of being torn down, it was called either a community treasure or a pile of dead lumber. I worked to make it a community treasure. I will work the same way to either move students to a new district or to make sure that every resource that can be generated for our children for Newt as a community resource is in place.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, for those of you that don't know me, I'm Travis Corvo. I've only been living in Milton since 2018, prior to that, I was in Rochester, then I did live in Milton for several years before. I've never really been active in any of the boards except the school board, going back to when Al ran for school board member back in 2018, I think it was, 18. And I've attended most every school board meeting since then. I am active at the school, I attend all their sporting events, I help Al get ready for sporting events. Last year during Meet the Candidates, I sat up here and said that I don't think Newt sucks, I do think Newt is a good school, and I will, you know, if people choose to keep Newt open, I'll find ways to keep it open, I'll find ways to raise funds. I like to research stuff before I open my mouth, as I understand or I know this, I'll research it before. If I don't know it, I will say I don't know it before saying something. Just to give you a little bit about myself, I am a veteran. My background is more of law enforcement than anything, and I do currently work in cybersecurity. That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Do you have any things that you'd like to add, Matt?
No, I just wish the school board could have figured this one out on their own, but here we are, so. That's all I got.
No, I mean, for myself, you know, it goes back to, you know, years in the past. We've come up in situations like this, and for myself, first of all, I just want to thank each one of you for for everything that you've done for our community. Because, like I said in the past, doing these types of jobs, it's a lot of work. It takes time from your family to do these posts, and, you know, people just need to realize that, you know, most of us, we do this because we love where we live. And so with that being said, I just go back to, you know, what the taxpayers have asked us to do. And I go back to, you know, where the last election, Al lost by a handful of votes, and the taxpayers pretty much voted him in if he, you know, if he would have lost, he lost by a few votes, so. It's morally and ethically, you know, we should put Travis Corvo into the next school board member. And if you want that in a motion, I'll do so.
Well, can I have a moment to speak?
You can.
Thank you, since I've kind of put myself on, I've been able to attend the school board meetings since June. Of course, mask mandates and mask options have been a top priority because I feel that's something that should be decided between the parent and the child, not the school board. So, yes, I do appreciate everything that you gentlemen have done, and I concur, I understand the election process, but like me, I didn't run for select board when I was appointed previous. There was other people that did, and they didn't win. So I saw an opportunity, and I felt really led to step in and apply. And of course, I received that position and then later ran this past March. So I don't think it's always just about how close the next person was. I do look at what's going on locally. And being at the school board really opened my eyes as to how many parents weren't really involved at the beginning. And I'm thankful that they have, since then, been attending and being a voice for their children. So I also took some time to review this past January's town meeting, because I thought that was important. I can't remember what everybody's stance was, so I took some time to look at the YouTube video on that and some other YouTube videos from the school board meetings. Because I do want to make an honest and right decision that I think, not based on popularity or anything else like that. It's what the contributions that people have made. So I look at that as well, and who's really kind of stepped up, who's really been there, and who's really been trying to do what is right. Mr. Brown's been there every single time, so, and I appreciate that. So I just, and I also look at the state, the state constitution. So I just wanted to share this because in the New Hampshire State Constitution, Part 2, Article 83, the constitutional duty of every board member is to ensure that students with the district receive their constitutional entitlement to an adequate education, which I believe is what most parents want, they just want their children to have a good education. And it's important that whoever is chosen for this seat is someone who understands their oath and the position before calling out unconstitutional mandates and policies on the students. It is important that whoever is chosen for this seat understands the details and possible ramifications of federal grants that can cause further barriers between the school board, what the school board deems regulation and policy over the parent's choice of what is best for their child. And it is also important that whoever is chosen for this seat understands the New Hampshire state laws of what types of curriculum and propaganda that is not allowed to be taught to the students. For instance, critical race theory, which many board members had no idea what I was talking about, yet a poster behind them had material that applied to it. That is very disturbing to me. So over the past four months, I've been attending these school board meetings. I'm surprised at the lack of knowledge of some of the members have regarding the topics that I've mentioned here. So there are three applicants for this position. And I know that there's one in particular that had a very clear understanding, doing the research, making sure they understood the grants and how deep that goes. It's not just a one-page summary. It's not. And if we are concerned about masks now, forced vaccination is down the road. And that's what's in these grant monies. So I just also want to clarify that this position will also be filled, will be filled for the next four months, but it'll also be open in March, as well as a second seat will be made available for the March election. So there, the residents will have their choice, their chance to vote for those two seats. And with that, I understand that we have the two that we hear, and there was another gentleman, Don Diamond, that had also applied for this position. And he unfortunately is not able to be here because he had to work. But Don has actually been very active in the school board meetings and has been very well-versed in what's going on with these grants, with policies, and what is actually constitutional in our state of New Hampshire and understanding that. So, Andy?
Yes.
Sorry that I bored you over there.
Looking at, no, no, I was looking at a budget here.
I know. So do I have a motion to vote?
Yeah, no, I'll make a motion to seat Travis Corvo until the next election. That's my, that's my motion.
Okay. All right. And I'm actually in favor of Don Diamond. I think that he would be a very good person for this seat. And how about you?
Oh, it's up to me, huh?
Yeah, I'm putting it on you.
Oh, boy. I'll second Travis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just want to congratulate Travis, I think he'll do a great, great job, I think he'll be a good voice for...
Well, I said no.
I think he'll be a good voice for the taxpayers and a good voice for our children that go to Newt High, you know, to the Newt school system. So congratulations, Travis, and you got your work cut out for you.
Yes, you do.
And, Miss Madam, if you don't mind, could you swear him in tonight, please?
Do we have that paperwork?
Does anybody?
Michelle is here, but...
I was under the understanding that you were gonna bring something to be sworn in tonight? No? Okay.
Do you want the language?
I mean, it's a school board, so whatever the school board, I mean, I...
It's the same swearing.
It's the same, okay.
For all, top position.
Or any elected official, it's the same.
All right, that's fine. Yeah, no, that'd work if you have it.
I can pull it up here.
Technology, isn't it great?
I know. I don't have, I don't have service. Yeah, do you have it in front?
Oddly enough.
Oddly enough, I was just about to...
Thank you, Larry.
You should get a T-shirt made up for that.
I think I got it here. I would be doing that.
Hold the chair, please.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Can't find it fast enough on the internet, sorry.
Those who are abstentious in their oaths may, instead of the phrase, "So help me God, insert this I affirm under the pains and penephys of perjury."
So you can omit that for those who feel guilty.
All right. It's a good thing I can still read cursive. Okay, sir. Travis, Travis, right.
Yeah.
All right, when you raise your right hand, I, Travis Corvo,
I, Travis Corvo,
do solemnly and sincerely affirm,
Do solemnly and sincerely affirm.
That I will faithfully and...
Partially.
Partially, thank you. Just, go ahead.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform all the duties.
Discharge and perform all the duties.
Incumbent on me.
Incumbent on me.
As, I'm thinking, school board member. According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of this constitution, thank you.
Of this constitution.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
This I do under, nope. That's it, right? Is that your end? "So help me God." "So help me God."
"So help me God."
Sorry, he omitted that part. Thank you very much.
Okay with handshakes?
Congratulations.
Oh, yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
For those of us who, being ministers, still have a quicker background.
Travis, Michelle and I actually get out a written document for you to sign so that, because we need a written record for our files. But we'll send you an email to get back and sign that at a later date, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Moving on to the next item, review a proposed contract with Avatar Associates of New England Incorporated for assessing services in fiscal year 2022 through 2024.
Yes, Madam Chair. We received earlier in the month, or, sorry, last month, October, a proposed contract from Avatar Associates of New England, who does our appraisal and assessing work. This is the actual field work in combination with assisting our assessor, Sue Sorino, with that particular work. Noted that last year, the board signed the contract for one full year in the amount of $42,096. The amount going forward for '22 and for '23 would be $19,860. This is a reduction from last year's contract because due to staffing shortages, they are no longer able to provide two scheduled days of service in the community itself. Now, that is not to say that they won't be here doing the work, they actually will. They'll respond to building permits and things, and transfers and subdivisions, and things of that nature that occur in the normal process, but the ability to, if you will, meet with residents over tax disputes, things of that nature, they cannot do on a scheduled basis. But if those meetings are required, necessary, they would do it at the rate of 95 an hour. My comment, or what I'd like to point out to the board, is this could be a three-year contract if you chose, but it's also a three-year contract that recognizes that in the third year, 2024, we face a town-wide reevaluation at $105,792. That revaluation will be all the more critical because a part of the reduction in service is they're not actually reassessing a portion of the town every single year. So critical is that through '22 and '23, we will fall more out of what we call an assessed ratio value. We'll fall well below the 90%. I'm thinking that if we were to sign the contract for 2024, we'd lock in the contract itself out that far. Secondly, it would allow us to take monies, let's say at the end of the year, when you have unexpended resources, you could actually put them to that contract lawfully and thus not have to, in March of '23, raise $105,000 to get that job done. Right now, you have $2.19 in that particular revolving account or savings account, for lack of a better terminology, to get that actual work done in 2024.
Is this being recorded?
Everything we do is being recorded. Let me just check, yep. They're live in Memorex as a fullback.
Someone text me and said it wasn't.
They're not hearing it?
I guess not.
Audio mixer is live and in green. It says we're on.
Okay.
All the technology that I know.
Okay.
It's live on their sound.
It's all right? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. What do you think?
I know, I mean, I know the reason why we signed the one-year contract was, you know, we, I think Matt was on the board. I don't think Claudine was, right, unfortunately? But we did a one-year contract just because, you know, Avatar, you know, for me, wasn't, you know, really showing a good, in good faith, you know, of doing what they're supposed to be doing. And that's why we signed a one-year contract. I mean, it's nice to be able to have somebody here from, and I understand that, you know, everybody's short of help. So they're saying that they can't have anybody in this building?
On a regular schedule. If, for instance, let's say, two people do want to meet with them, we can probably, through my office, set a time and a date. But to say that it's gonna be every other Thursday, you know, the first and the third Thursdays of the month, or the second and the fourth, whatever, they just can't do that right now.
I mean, because this is about the taxpayers as well, I mean, this is a service they're paying for.
Yep.
And, you know, they need to, they need a voice, and...
They still will represent us in Concord when it goes, things go to the Department of Revenue Administration. They'll still go out and do the assessments, they are available to talk to anybody by phone and also through email. But as far as like traveling over and fixing those particular dates, no. My concern is that, a number of things. You're gonna see this in another contract that I'm gonna ask you to review tonight. We're being dropped because they don't have enough staff. And luckily, we found somebody who will pick us up for auditing services. Everybody that I speak to, including my staff, they all prefer and want to work with Avatar. Because, A, we're using their software, B, they wrote it, there's any issues with it, the town clerk doesn't have, and as acting tax collector also appreciates the fact that we have Avatar on staff. I think it's something that we, you know, this may modify itself. We may be getting back to them next year or '24 when this labor issue, COVID, whatever, all the modifying factors are for these types of labor issues, we may be able to go back and modify the contract. But for right now, everybody would like to stay with Avatar. Including your town administrator, he'd like one less thing to have to change.
Well, I wasn't necessarily saying that we have to, it's just, you know...
Is this the only option, is the three-year contract?
Oh, no, you can sign it for one year. You can sign it for two years, or, no, sorry, there's two boxes. Three-year contracting for assessing full update is noted above, or one-year '22. Three-year contracting for assessing full update is noted above, or one-year '22, as noted above. And you did encumber this money last year. We haven't spent any of last year's encumbered money to date. You've technically got this paid through '22 and '23 already. Budget committee is going to be asking us to zero out this particular line when we get to it.
Right.
In the budget line. I mean, but my only concern is, by bringing up the third year, is I'm trying to avert another big-ticket item, when there may be other big-ticket items also on the ballot in 2024. And rather not have this one voted down because we're mandated to do it. And as I said, by putting it under contract, if we could put away ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars at this, over the next two to three years, that would take a sting out of that. And would, you know, say to the current, you know, taxpayers, we know this is coming. We're taking prudent steps to avert the pain or offset the pain. But it's not my choice. Not my final decision. It's my advice.
No, I mean, it's not, it's not going away. It's just something that we have to, it's inevitable. So, you know, if, I'm fine with a three-year contract. Totally up to the board.
It would probably cost, what I'm assuming is that if we did go with somebody else, it would cost even more because we're.
Jumping ship and they'd have to relearn the curve, probably.
Okay. All right.
So I put a motion down at the bottom of the page, however you want to read it or word it.
All right. I'll make a motion for the town of Milton to enter into an agreement with Avatar Associates of New England, Incorporated of Chichester, New Hampshire, to provide assessing services for fiscal year 2022 through fiscal year 20.
Twenty-four is what.
Twenty-four, at nineteen thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars per year in the reevaluation in 2024 for one hundred five thousand seven hundred ninety-two dollars. This is a multi-year contract and shall expire December 31st, 2024, or whenever the reevaluation is completed.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If you'd want to sign that, Madam Chair, I could get that out tomorrow morning.
Anybody else?
Do the same thing, I'll put it on that.
Yep, okay.
Some fancy paper. I bet this one nineteen grand buys you.
Chief, you have the, you're up in the car.
Yes.
Which one do you want to do first?
Your call. You're the chief.
So I guess we'll talk about the MDTs and the cruisers. I came to you guys earlier in the year telling you that we were having issues with them. I've been able to Band-Aid three of the four that we need to replace this whole time. One of them has been out of service since the last time I talked to you guys about them. When I came to you the last time, it was about a six- to nine-month wait on the current ones that we use, which are the Panasonic ToughBooks. The ToughBooks have lasted seven years at this point. So for me, I don't see a reason to go away from the ToughBooks because if we do, then we have to buy new mounts, we have to buy new other hardware as well. I've contacted my computer company as well as my outfitting company for the cruisers. The quote I got from the computer company is four thousand twenty-two dollars and forty-nine cents per MDT. And from the cruiser company, he contacted, he uses Panasonic directly. He couldn't get any through Panasonic, but in doing research, he was able to find some. He'll have to go through multiple suppliers. This is what he told me on Thursday of last week. Hopefully, they're still available. If, when I contact him tomorrow, but he could find them at three thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dollars each. Obviously, with everything we've seen throughout the year, everything is up with inflation because when we bought the same tablet in November of 2020, it was twenty-seven hundred dollars. So the price has gone up dramatically on all of those items. So I'm asking the board to give me permission to purchase the MDTs. Obviously, if we can't get them through my cruiser supplier, I'd like to purchase them through my computer supplier. So that way, because they're only a two- to three-week wait right now instead of the six- to nine-month wait. And if we keep waiting, I'm expecting that I won't be able to Band-Aid the other three any longer.
And you get this out of your budget?
Yes.
You got the funds?
Mm-hmm.
And do you, so how many do you need? How many are you going to get?
Need four.
Four?
I have one already purchased for Cruiser One when it arrives, hopefully this month.
So do you want, so we probably should give them the okay at the four thousand twenty-two dollars and.
Sixteen, sixteen thousand eighty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents is the higher price.
What is it?
Sixteen thousand eighty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents.
Okay. It's up to the board. I'm fine with it. I mean, it's a tool that they need and, you know, usually computers don't last seven years, especially, you know.
That's why we go with the ToughBooks because they're military-grade, so they're specifically made for dealing with the cold temperatures, the vibrations, the drops. Thankfully, these don't get dropped, but they're in a cruiser three hundred and sixty-five days a year, dealing with all temperature changes, all vibrations from the car, everything else. And we've, like I said, we've got seven years out of them so far. We can't really complain, especially when we purchased them originally for about the twenty-seven hundred dollars each, so.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll make the motion for the chief to buy the ToughBooks at sixteen thousand eighty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents. And if he can get them at the cheaper rate, then.
I'll definitely try to get them cheaper if I can.
And I'm sure he will. So that's the motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, second item, I actually have three items. The third one's not on the agenda, but I got news on Friday that Car One is in, so you guys have to make a decision. Well, not in, but is on its way to us. So you guys have to make a decision on the other Car One, on what we're going to do with it. But first, we'll talk about the grant and the sign board. The grant is back from the state. We were approved for the twenty thousand dollars to purchase the third sign. So what I need from the board, I need to know what you want to do. So we provided you guys with the three types of signs. The same sign that we have already, the big one. The small one, which is the speed trailer, and then the mid-range one, which is easier for us to fit on our side roads, but has a similar sign size as the large sign. So it has a smaller trailer platform, but a bigger sign than this speed trailer. That would be my suggestion for the third sign, just because it'd be easier for us to get on some of our smaller side roads that don't have a big shoulder and don't have a breakdown area for us to put those in. And then when we do have to ask residents if we can put it on their property for when there is construction or things to that nature, it's not taking up as big of a spot on your property while the construction is going on. I know when we had the construction on Tenerife, we couldn't put the big sign on Tenerife because there's no spots for us to be able to put that sign off and safely keep it off the side of the road. We put the speed trailer out at the bottom of the road because there was a safe spot for us to be able to do that, but that takes the speed trailer from us being able to use it for its purpose and putting it out on certain roads that we need to collect data on and use it for what it needs to be.
So, question?
Yep.
Madam, do you mind? So, so we got the twenty thousand dollar grant. I wish we would have gotten it, you know, prior to, you know, getting the last two signs because that was the whole, whole idea, but, you know, I'm not, I don't oppose this. I just want. So how much is this speed trailer going to cost total?
Depends on which one you go with.
Okay.
So if we go with the same one we have, that's twenty-one, was it twenty-one-five, when we got the quote. But the quote is now four months old. So the other sign was nineteen, the mid-level sign was, I think, nineteen-five, and then the speed trailer is seventeen.
So to be clear, the one the chief wanted, is recommending, and the one I'd like to put, again, the same thing with size issue, is the nineteen thousand five hundred dollar one.
Okay.
Because the bigger letters are easier to read when you're moving at speed or excessive speed. And also, it's mobility and positioning.
And so that's what the town has to come up with?
No, the town doesn't have to come up with anything. The town has.
Oh, I thought it was a matching.
We've already come up with our portion of it when we bought the two signs last year.
Oh, okay.
Right.
This twenty thousand dollars is the matching grant for the stuff that we've already purchased.
Boy, you just made me happy.
What we have to come up with is anything that we go over the twenty thousand dollars.
Okay.
So if we go over the twenty thousand dollars by buying the same sign that we already have, the big sign, we have to come up with that balance over the twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, no, I'm happy with the nineteen-five.
It's good.
And thanks for your hard work.
Yep, absolutely. I know that they've been a success and.
This would be good to put up in the mills, you know. I know you put them all over, but it's, this would be good. It'd be good transparency and it's just good to let the taxpayers know what's going on. So, and I've had a lot of good feedback with these signs, so.
They, they're working for what we need them to do.
Yep.
And it is good to have it sitting here when we don't have a construction job going on to be able to put the big sign out. People can see it. They can find out when meetings are, and they can get different messages out. With the speed trailer, we can put it in different locations and try to get meetings out and messages out to people when we're putting it on the side roads as well.
No, this is great. Okay.
And these have software in them that allows the chief literally remotely to change the lettering on a NAS needed basis. Matter of fact, he's quicker than I am, irrespective of doing updates.
Do you need a motion for that, sir?
So I need a motion on which sign you guys want us to purchase, and then if it goes over, if it goes over, obviously, the nineteen thousand dollars, I would ask that you just put it in the motion that the town administrator can make the decision on whether or not we're going to move forward with that mid-level sign, or we're going to come back to the board.
Are you all set, Matt, with the nineteen-five one? Motion so said, as the chief just stated.
For the mid-level sign.
Yeah, for the nineteen-five and.
I can sign the contract.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, item number three. I got information from Ford saying that Cruiser One that we purchased in 2020 has now been released by Ford, so we should have it sometime mid-November. When it arrives here, I need to know what you, what the board wants to do with the old Cruiser One. Do you want to auction it like you did the last cars? Is it a car the town is going to keep and get rid of one of the other cars that the town currently has? I know the vehicle that the town cleaner is using is coming to its probably end of life frame-wise. So we'll probably have to talk to the town mechanic on that, but that's a 2009, whereas this is a 2014. There is no frame issues, no rust issues, things like that on this car. So those are issues that the board has to make a decision on what you want to do with this car once we cycle it out of the police department.
I mean, normally, we only get like a couple thousand bucks for these cars anyways. Am I correct?
And that's an option too. I mean, I can talk to Ford and find out what they're doing for trade-in values now. When we traded in the last ones in 2019, when we tried to look at trading them in in nineteen, they were going to give us twenty-five hundred dollars for them.
Yeah, that's right.
So it was better to keep one for the town and then sell the other two, and I think we got twenty-six hundred dollars for them, selling them ourselves. So.
Which one is you know one? Is that?
That is the one with the door slating.
I mean, for myself, I mean, this car would, would, it would benefit the town a lot more for the twenty-five hundred dollars that would get for it. Where chief was explaining that the car is on its last leg down at the, that the cleaner uses. I mean, for me, it would just benefit the town just to keep it and retire the older car that they're using. So that would be.
Would we just group that into the other auction of vehicles or?
Yeah, and then get rid of the older cruiser. That'd be my recommendation, but it's totally up to the board.
Yeah, when it gets here, we could cycle and take in the new, the new used one, and if you direct me to, always prepare another bid to get rid of the other.
Okay.
Cleaner's car, I'll put it that way.
I mean, I can check with Wade to find out the exact issues with that car, but I know it's a 2009, so, and there were years that it didn't move, so. And we all know what New Hampshire winters do to cars when they don't move, so.
I think it'd just defeat the purpose if, I mean, we might just have to, you know, go buy another car or some, you know.
Oh, makes sense. It makes sense, yeah.
We know the running, you know, we know how it runs and so that's where I, I'm fine with it. It's up to Matt and Claudine though.
I'm fine with that as well, you know, just to update the other, the cleaner vehicle.
Cycle it through the fleet.
Cycle it through and then maybe put that, the older one in the auction as well and.
Yep.
Anything?
Yep.
Okay?
Sounds good.
Good. We need to make a motion on that or we? Does that decision?
Yeah.
Sounds like we need to wait until the other one gets here first.
Well, and technically, it's a town vehicle, so you're telling me that you're keeping it in the town, so it'll just be a cycle over to town hall and it'll. So we'll just have to do different plates with Michelle. We'll do a transfer of plates with Michelle's office and then we'll deal with it that way.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, next item. Affinity LED Street Light Project presentation by Steve, Steve Lieber.
Zieber. Steve's here in the audience to make a presentation.
Welcome.
Hello, good evening. My name's Steve Zieber. Affinity LED is out of Dover, New Hampshire. We are a name manufacturer, as well as providing all the turnkey services for street lighting and interior lighting. In New Hampshire, we've installed, built in our shop in Dover, New Hampshire, in the Washington Street Mill, which is a veteran assembly shop, so it's all built right here in New Hampshire by U.S. veterans. We've installed more streetlights in more communities than pretty much everybody else combined. We get a lot of support from local communities across the state. All of the new LED streetlights on the New Hampshire turnbikes and roadways are also, we had the state contract as well, did that conversion as well, and about sixty-five other communities and growing. So we have, we approached the town administrator to receive the information from Eversource, which we were authorized, given authorization to get the ledger and put together a proposal for you. It's pretty much self-funding in that the cost to the town is thirty-eight thousand dollars. You've got a hundred and seven lights before we go out and audit. This is what Eversource's documents say. Obviously, we'll do an investment-grade audit and make sure that's correct. In other communities, we find things that are not exactly right because the records are old. So when we go out and do an audit of the lighting and then sit down and put a plan together with you, but based on the current existing lighting, it's thirty-eight thousand dollars. You're currently paying close to sixteen thousand dollars a year for your street lighting. The changeover from the existing legacy high-pressure sodium lighting to LED will result in over eight thousand dollars in savings. So you're going to save about fifty-three percent on the project. Out of the thirty-eight thousand dollars of cost, Eversource will support ten thousand, will support ten thousand.
Five fifty.
Five hundred and fifty dollars. So the net cost to the town is twenty-eight thousand three hundred to change over the lights with an annual savings of over eight thousand dollars in three and a half years of pace for itself. So the lights, you're making decisions about lights that are going to go up for the next twenty years. Over the next twenty years, it's a hundred, over a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in savings. So we have proposed. So, um, we have, uh, proposed, uh, give, put together a package for all of you with, uh, information about all the details, uh, uh, past projects that we've done, uh, in the state of New Hampshire, in the state of Maine, with, uh, um, all the contact information. Um, and pretty much, we do turnkey services, not only do we build the lights, but we also do everything from the audit, uh, cover everything from the auditing until the lights have been changed, uh, over. Recycling has been taken out, uh, your ledger has been updated with Eversource, and we make sure your bill gets changed. So we pretty much do soup to nuts. Uh, probably any, uh, LED street light that you've seen, uh, in the state, with the exception of only a, a few communities, uh, are, are the lights that we built in our facility in Dover. So we're asking the town's, uh, permission, um, to make that investment. Um, you'll, you'll have to raise thirty-eight thousand dollars. You'll get a ten thousand, five hundred and fifty-dollar check back from Eversource when the lift is done, which we follow up and make sure that you get. And in three and a half years, just with your savings, you, you pay for it, and then it just goes to the bottom line and your budget, uh, from then on.
Can I, uh, comment?
Yes, please.
So Steve and I have worked together before, uh, when I was Director of Public Works in Hampton. Uh, he reached out to the town. I think down there, I had a two-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-dollar electrical bill. Um, we had a much more complex project, because by the time they went through and reviewed our ledger, literally fixture by fixture, he found three that were being fed from North Hampton that we were paying for, that we probably shouldn't have been paying for. He found two streetlights that were on private property that we shouldn't have been paying for. Uh, they got resolved. Um, there was a dozen streetlights down on, uh, Ocean Boulevard that the state was going to pay for. Uh, part of the ledger never got turned over for sort of twenty years or so. Uh, the town had been paying that particular electrics, electricity bill. Um, we got that issue straightened out, uh, with their assistance and working with DOT. Um, the Hampton Board of Selectmen elected to waive the bidding process because Dover, Somersworth, and Rochester had all already combined together for one bid. Um, looking at their qualifications and things of that nature, plus, um, it was the same situation where I believe at about the same time they had already, uh, been awarded the state of New Hampshire bid. And the bid, bidding process in our regulations and in Hampton's were that if there was another government entity that had bid out the project of a similar nature, uh, that you could waive, if you will, the bidding process. Um, my se, always looking within the office for potential savings, um, to pass down through to the budget, I think, from my perspective, this is a no-brainer. Um, and that we need, do need to go through this and do it, A to B. You know, if we speak, that we're going to be a look to reduce our carbon emissions, we're going to be a green community, we're going to do the right thing. This is one of those things that we can do to, to say that we're actually taking those kind of steps. Um, on top of that, um, I would recommend that we actually put in the storehouse five or six extra fixtures, uh, not that they're going out of business, but the, the situation is, and I believe it will be the same with Eversource here, they only want to go up on their poles, and they'll, if one of them happens to go out, A, it gets damaged in a traffic accident, um, if we have one on the shelf, we can literally hand it to the Eversource crew, and it could go up. And, uh, we don't have to wait, or negotiate, or try and find, because he's busy, he's got, probably, you can see by his brochure, product coming in, product going out. It's all probably committed to certain projects, but that would be my only, um, extra, if you will, to add to the project. Uh, one of the things the board should consider is we are going to come in under, uh, under budget this year. You may want to, uh, fund this whole thirty-eight thousand right out of, uh, an aside, you know, from, from the remaining money. And we can do that in December, when we actually look at what we've got, and, um, then make this contract happen. Then you'll actually see the reduction in that year's bill, but you'll actually see, once they're in. And what would they take, less than a month to put in, all of them?
Uh, depending on when, uh, contracted, in terms of the installation, it's, it's just a few days.
Few days. Yeah, okay, so it was, it was a month per, but they were putting in fifty to sixty a day down in Hampton. I mean, literally, they're just rolling down the street. I don't think they ever put the bu, bucket down, clip, take it off, they put on a connector, they plug the thing in, slide it on, tighten down the screws, and next, and keep going. And so we instantaneously saw a drop in our bill, um, right after it had been done, which goes right to the bottom line, but those are the choices, or non-choices.
So what is the cost savings by doing this?
Literally eight thousand a year. We cut our electric bill in about half.
Under the current, uh, the current tariff, you're paying about fifteen thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars a year. Uh, that's assuming, and we're not putting any, you know, uh, um, you know, additional percentages on for future years, uh, because it's all proportionate. If rates go up, uh, savings go up as well, uh, proportionately, so, um, and significantly, uh, could be just, you know, the natural resource, uh, cost. So you're paying fifteen thousand, four hundred and fifty, bill, uh, your bill will come down to around seventy-two hundred dollars, so that's where the eighty-two hundred dollars comes from, uh, and then, uh, Eversource putting in the ten thousand, five hundred. It's about, uh, a little less than three and a half years, three, four, five years to be paid for.
And to be clear, the board does not have to make a decision on this tonight, if you, if you want to delay it until later November or December. I would just recommend before the end of the year, this is something to really consider.
And what is the history with our lighting that we do have now? Like, has, has there any, has there been any replacements or upgrades, or like, are?
Well, I know a number of years ago, there was a subcommittee that went through and did look at all of them. Um, and at that time, I think, almost a hundred lights got taken out, uh, because, kind of find out, and this is the same thing that happened in Hampton. People would call and say, the end of my, call Eversource, say, the end of my driveway is dark. Can you put up a light? Eversource would come and put up a light, and just literally add it to, to, to your bill. And so at sixty-seven dollars a month, everybody just went, oh, must be the cost of do, doing business. So, that's in literally how in every community, the number of streetlights has grown. Uh, this community, a number of years ago, I think it was two thousand and seven, took the bigger step and, and really brought that back down. Um, so we're not going to see that kind of, uh, savings, if you will.
So, I'm sorry, so those hundred lights that were, uh, shut down?
Yeah.
They're not going to be?
Correct. Well, they're not there anymore. They don't exist.
I just want to make sure.
A lot of them, the, what they call the Cobra Heads, literally got taken off the, literally right off the poles. Or, and then, I'm sure if other people thought, okay, the end of my driveway is still dark, they might have put up their own light, three-quarters, halfway down their driveway, something closer to the road. But, uh, yeah, no longer on the town's bill.
So we won't be adding those on to the current?
There are no plans to add at this time.
And when we do the audit, we capture every light that is in the community, and then go back with Eversource and reconcile, so. Those lights, uh, that town manager, uh, town administrator is talking about are called private area lights. And there are those private area light agreements are with, uh, private parties, or even potentially the town, on a separate bill that's, uh, in, you know, perhaps on a building, um, electrical, um, on the electrical bill for that building. Where we find those, we'll come to you and ask if you want to move those over to the ledger, because they, they cannot be a private area light to get changed, but if they get put onto the town ledger, they can be changed. But we would only come to you and show you which of the town's lights, uh, fall under a private area agreement. All the others, we'll confirm those, uh, you'll find those in front of mobile stations, in front of private residences, any Dunkin' Donuts, I mean, they're, we know where private area lights exist. Um, and then whatever agreements have been, have been done between private residents, but we'll have those on the map, um, which is GIS map, and our installers will actually know to pass them because they will have a connect on them saying, these are private, you don't touch these and change them.
Yeah, I know, well, for, for myself, I know, like, the state went through one-twenty-five here and put new LED lights up. And, of course, it's a much better light. Um, and I know for, for myself too, and Madam Chair, you know, signing those Eversource checks that we sign, um, to pay our Eversource bill, um, it is brutal to have to put my name on that Eversource check. Well, she does it now, thank God, but, um, it, it's, I mean, if, if there's any cost here, and I know there is a cost savings, I mean, just do your own house, you save money. I did my own, my whole house, and I saved money on my light bill, so I know it's, uh, inevitable that the town will save, you know, a lot of money, and, um, I just, you know, that's, I think, I think it's a good idea.
Mr. Russ, and that is true, uh, uh, the, the bills that you're paying today, you're still paying on the tariff, kind of the rental fee, because those are not your lights. You're paying a, you know, an, an depreciated asset value. It's, the way it's set up, uh, to use the simplest term, every time you've bought a street light in the past, it's been like going to get a TV at the rent-a-center, a brand-new TV at the rent-a-center. You're going to pay for a lot longer, a lot more than it would cost you if you were able at the time, which you weren't, until the LED tariff came out. So, and those checks that you're writing, you're just paying rent on equipment that you don't own. Um, and the cost to reduce is not only the fact that you'll have bought your lights, so you're not paying for them anymore, um, on a monthly basis, and you're going to consume a lot less energy, uh, because the energy consumption goes down, your bill goes down because you're still getting billed on energy, so. Uh, the lights on one-twenty-five, those are all, uh, Affinity LED lights as well, because we're part of the state contract.
Sure. Now, and it's going to be interesting to, um, you know, and hopefully this does take place, but it's going to be interesting to find those hundred and seven lights, because I, I don't, I mean, I was on the board, and I don't think honestly, um, uh, I don't know, it's, it's going to be interested to find out those hundred and seven lights. I don't think we, we have a hundred and seven lights, but...
It could be that we're paying for lights we don't even own.
Right, and that's, they aren't even there.
In that case, we'll bring that information to you, because we'll bring a, an audit team out. Um, and, you know, currently, this is what's coming off of your, your bill.
Right.
The ledger that Eversource, Eversource has on record.
Yep.
And then, uh, it's matched up to the, the bill that you're getting every month, so if you don't have those lights here, we'll also bring that up to you, and that's something that you'd be able to bring to Eversource and have that conversation.
That information alone is, to me, worth that type of money, because I just don't think we have that, those lights, so.
So may not?
Yeah, it's going to be good.
I did, uh, give to Mr. Lieber the, uh, contact for the school, and he, he's expressed to me that they are having the same type of discussions and, and possible, uh, audit with the school for the same purpose, so.
We've been through the initial audit already of, uh, of the administration building, of, uh, the elementary school and the middle-high library. We've already done that initial audit, and now we're waiting, um, to go in to do the electrical audit, uh, to make sure, but, uh, for example, the, the city of Rochester, uh, um, we have done all the schools, uh, besides doing all their street lighting, all the decorative lighting downtown. We've done the Rochester Community Center with all smart lighting, so it's all human-centric. It harvest daylight, it's got, you know, uh, what, what we call dynamic occupancy, so it does a lot more things than just an occupancy sensor to save money. Um, classrooms are programmed to have, uh, more scenes, the, you know, redboard scene, the electronic projectors is a different scene that saves money and, you know, reduces the lighting a little differently. We've done all of the Rochester schools, except I think, uh, East Rochester, that had already been done. Uh, we're in the process now of, uh, in fact, next week, we start the library. There's only three more buildings left. Uh, we've done everything in the city of Rochester. Similar to Dover, we'll be doing the schools, starting the schools soon also. There's probably about, building lights, there's probably about eight or nine thousand fixtures right now in the city of Rochester, so. And every time you put one of those lights in, you save money, just like on the streetlights, so. We're going to bring that also to the school board and show them that proposal, what this means, so that they can make...
How about the one on the outside of this building out here?
If it's on your ledger, it's going to get changed.
One in the corner of the parking lot will get changed out. I was really surprised I had some of those high-pressure sodiums as yard lights in Public Works, and they replaced them with LED, and it was, well, you couldn't tell the difference in the light distribution, but I was no longer paying the demand charge for such a, an expensive light, just a firearm.
Yeah, the other thing is that, um, once the audit's done, we, we do a lighting review with you. So, we usually ask that, you know, fire and police get involved as well, because this is the one chance that you have to say, you know, we'll come and show you, look, if we just took one for one and did this change, this is what it would look like, but do you have areas that you're concerned about? We see a brighter light in this intersection that's similar to other intersections. Is that brighter light up there because it was just a mistake? Should it be not as bright? It gives you a chance one, one last time before the lights go up to say, here's how we're going to change things. Um, and that usually involves people that have knowledge of the town, that, uh, might say, look, this is, this is a curve that, you know, was, like, common for traffic accidents, or we have an issue because this particular crosswalk, um, is usually troublesome. Maybe we need to put a brighter light here. Um, we have those kind of conversations with you that, you know, help you to solve those problems at the same time.
The guy behind you, twenty years, he knows. So, yeah, no, that, that'll be good to, to find that information, s, you know, see if we need any lights anywhere else, or maybe some lights could, could be taken down, so, um, yeah, okay.
So do you want to act on it now, or you want me to bring it back in December?
I would prefer to wait till, um, either next meeting, or just to be able to look at material and just kind of, you know, just to understand a little bit more.
Definitely on board, and I'd like to...
Yeah, I, I, anything to save money, but at the same time, I just want to make sure that this is...
Steve gave us all the time in the world in Hampton to make up the decision and get the five members to get up to speed with it, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next item on the agenda?
Madam Chair, um, Road Agent, as capacity as government buildings and maintenance, has received a proposal from Fielding's Oil and Propane to deliver heating oil to the town buildings for the coming heating season. He pointed out to me the town building is this building. Um, their price, uh, from Fielding's is two forty-nine-nine per gallon, contract would end May thirty-first. In the past, uh, the Road Agent has gone ahead and, uh, acquired this service. I asked him to allow us to bring it to the board, because it goes over, again, to, into two fiscal years. And I don't believe that any of the department heads have the, uh, as I've stated in the past, the authority to commit the town to a future contract. Um, and there is a, uh, the town's purchasing policy does exempt heating oils as one of the turn, items that is exempt from the bidding process, uh, but again, I brought this forward to the board because of its, uh, extends into fiscal year twenty, twenty-two.
I, I know two forty-nine's not a bad price right now. Um, I go buy, uh, an establishment in Barrington every day, and it's, it's up to, uh, it's up to three oh-five a gallon. Um, so I'm, I'm not going to say any names, but, but that's what's on the board, so, um, so that's...
I saw three forty-nine a week ago, on the back of a truck.
Hmm, so two forty-nine is, is, I think, a good price. And I'm fine with it.
Okay.
And we need to keep our buildings warm.
Anything else?
Nope. We have a suggested motion if someone wants to.
Do you want to make the motion, or?
Sure, oh, you want me to?
Yep.
Yeah, so, um, I'll make a motion for the town of Milton to enter into agreement with Fielding's Oil and Propane, Inc. of Rochester, New Hampshire, to purchase heating oil at the, at the purchase price of two forty-nine ninety-nine per gallon, um, delivered to the various town-owned buildings within Milton. This is a multi-year contract. It expires twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Forget this to Pat, and we'll get it done.
Okay, next item, Town Hall Evaluation Assessment Services.
Yes, Madam Chair, um, there's been, uh, flurry of discussion, um, around town, uh, amongst staff, that, uh, and we've all viewed the building up at, uh... that, uh, and we've all viewed the building up at, uh, the former Head Start Building that's up in the industrial park. My concern was that, uh, we have half the story or half the information. And I reached out to a town resident who is a retired architect, Dan Bisson, uh, asked him to prepare a proposal, because I've worked with Dan in a number of, uh, school-type building projects. Idlehurst School in Summersworth is one. Um, I also worked with him extensively on the, uh, school up here and, uh, the addition onto Newt a number of years ago. Asked him if he would give us a price to do a, uh, building evaluation. What does he think a building like this would need for the coming, if you will, 10 years? And, um, what are our space needs, how we're utilizing the building, et cetera, any, uh, life safety code things that he thought that we would, might need to address. Uh, concerns I have is that we've basically overloaded the floor behind you, to your left, where the assessing and land use offices are, uh, because that's actually a false floor on top of a floor. Um, I don't think it was intended to hold the 20-some-odd, 300-plus-pound filing cabinets that we have on the floor. Um, that floor's got a definite wave to it. Um, if you step in certain areas, you can actually feel the floor flex and move up and down. I know from my structural engineering classes, that's a no-no. That just tells you that, uh, you've overloaded the floor. Uh, you're about to end up in the basement if you don't watch it. Uh, I have some concerns about the mechanical heating, cooling of the the building, the cost. The other thing, um, we have to face someday is a possible repair of the parking lot, but I don't look to Dan to tell me what that's gonna cost. Um, so he's come back to me with a, uh, program study cost of $9,400. I think it would be wise and prudent to have the building evaluated before we make a decision to, if you will, vacate this structure for for another building in town. While I like the other building, I just don't, I'm not comfortable without the facts. It's the engineer in me. Uh, would rather know why we're getting out of this building to go to another building. Or is this building, you know, because that building's not free. But if this building can be upgraded and expanded for, let's say, a hundred thousand, then, you know, it gives the board the choice. Stay and improve, or move and you have something that with LED lighting, in-floor heating, yada, 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 and, you know, bigger parking lot, et cetera, et cetera, and a host of other uses for that bigger building. But I think the taxpayers should know, and I think we we should rely on the information rather than just going at this blind. So I'm asking for the board to approve a, it's been a $9,400 contract for Mr. Bisson to work in the next 60 to 90 days to answer that question for us.
So is he the only contractor?
He is the only person I reached out to do this, yes. Only because I've worked with him on it. He is also the architect that we used for the fire station, at least the preliminary to get to the final, steps up to the final plans. So he's done a, uh, an awful lot of work already in the town and for the town. To me, it was a logical choice. If you think I should at least get another price or two, I can.
Yeah, I mean...
But also, this is my way of broaching the subject with you. Is this a prudent thing to do? Maybe you think, no, this is, don't waste the $9,400 cash in the building, and let's, let's go up the road. But I think otherwise...
I do agree that the building should be assessed. Obviously, there's a lot of work that needs to be done, not just on this level, but downstairs as well, to make it a better functioning facility for recreation. Um, my only concern is just having one, one bid on this. It'd be kind of nice to see where we're at, at least with another contractor.
No, I mean, if you don't mind, Chris, just reaching out, I mean, I think the information is is essential. I mean, um, for us and for the taxpayers.
Yep.
Um, I know unfortunately, you know, this building has got some age on it. I know the foundation, you know, I've talked to Pat in the past, um, the roof needs to be done. Um, and these are all things that, um, you know, the furnace, um, came over on the Mayflower. Um, so these are things that, you know, that we are, you know, we do have a capital improvement plan, but, um, and, you know, we're gonna have to start dipping into that for this building if we continue to, if we're gonna stay here. But it would be nice to to, um, to know if, you know, if these are all legitimate, um, areas that really need to be, to looked at. I mean, um...
I'll, uh, reach out and get at least one more estimate, if not two.
I would appreciate that.
Yeah, can do.
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Just to keep it transparent.
Yes, I agree, and that's why I did it this way. Okay, good.
Thank you. Thank you. Item seven, the 2022 holiday schedule for review and approval.
Yes, um, went through the process of, uh, preparing the 2022, uh, holiday schedule so that the employees had something to rely on, uh, for, if you will, vacation planning next year, things of that nature. Um, also, there was the question of what to do about the Juneteenth, National Independence Day, that was approved by the federal government earlier in June of 2021. Um, the question being, is this a currently a federal holiday, um, that, um, the town should recognize? Uh, if others have recognized it, um, someone sent me from one of the other communities a copy of what the state of New Hampshire has identified, uh, for their calendar year going through 2022. Uh, June 19th day is not on the federal, is not on the state calendar, has not been adopted, uh, if you will, as part of their personnel policy or negotiated with the SEA. Uh, for those reasons, I would think it would be premature for us to probably enter into that discussion uh, with our employees at this time. Uh, and therefore, I've excluded it from the holiday schedule and just asked the board to approve, uh, this schedule, that, uh,
Yeah, I mean...
is similar to last year. The only difference, uh, one last thing, is that, uh, they do get the day after Christmas off in 2022, because Christmas falls on a Sunday this year.
Okay.
Or this coming year, we should say.
Next year, please.
Correct, next year, right, this, this year it's on a Saturday, but next year it's on a Sunday. So that would give them, uh, for that, due to that rotation, the extra day.
Sure.
Yeah, no, I mean, we've just pretty much, since I've been on the board, just follow the state's, state's schedule of, um, of days off. So, uh, I'm I'm fine just doing it that way.
Good.
Okay.
And if that's as, and that's how this is followed?
So it's written, yeah, and and this goes by our current personnel policy, and it, right, does not recognize the day. I just wanted to be very upfront with everybody in the public and with our, uh, employees and staff that how and why this came about, and why we may or may not have been doing this with respect to that particular day.
Okay, very good. So, um, I'll motion to adopt the holiday calendar for 2022 as presented by the administrator.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Let's get that posted.
And so, um, Fire Chief had called me and told me that he's still looking further into, um, the maintenance contract for more details, so we're gonna just table that. And then the last item here for new business is the event permit for Milton Mills Holiday Stroll.
And Bruce Woodruff does have one item that I neglected to put on the agenda.
Okay. So we'll take care of the Holiday Stroll?
Yeah, so the Holiday Stroll is a, there again, an informal stroll between business to businesses, uh, in the Milton Mills Village, uh, to take place on November 27th. I believe that's that shop local, small business Saturday. Um, it doesn't really have an organizer, it just had a, someone who spoke up, one Nicole Hunter. I asked her if I could put this permit before the board in her name. She said, yes, that would be fine. I talked to the chief about it, and, uh, we, it was his urging that we did it. In fact, do a event permit so that, A, he knows enough, that, well, it's, it's common knowledge that it's, that it's out there, uh, that it's going to occur, and, um, causes he and Fire Chief and others to look at, uh, if you will, our preparations for those, and it is in keeping with our policy. Um, because it does not attempt to stage anything, if you will, within, on a town right-of-way or closed traffic or anything of that nature, I'm recommending that the board would waive any application fee and any request for insurance.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah.
To waive that.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Motion so set if you need one.
No.
If that's the case.
Per, for nothing, okay.
All right.
Bruce.
I'll wing it. Hello, everyone. Bruce Woodruff, I'm the town planner. You probably already know that a previous select board had appointed me as the point of contact for the Townhouse Bridge project that's been going on, uh, sporadically forever, it seems. Uh, and also, you probably know that in 2019, uh, we hammered out with DOT at the state a municipal agreement, uh, with, uh, the money, the funding for the bridge. Uh, and then what ensued, obviously, was, uh, some foot-dragging by our neighboring community in Maine. Uh, and, uh, the fact that the DOT hadn't gotten an interstate agreement yet, so there was, there were a lot of pieces that hadn't come together, even though we signed our municipal agreement that I thought set in stone the amount of money that the project has cost. Enter 2020 and COVID, uh, and what came from that was that they, they went through three project managers. Probably about six months ago, the newest project manager said to me, you guys gotta sign a municipal agreement. And I said, well, we have one, and it's signed. Uh, and I sent it to them, and they were surprised, uh, even though they had it. And so, uh, here we are, on August 21st, I received, I received the, everyone's letting me down. I received a new municipal agreement. Uh, I made sure that the town administrator has a copy of that. Uh, what they said to me was this, that the only changes to the municipal agreement, uh, were the money pieces and the fact that the, the 10% cap on any increases in cost for the bridge were not for the total project, but for the individual pieces, such as design, preliminary engineering, and construction. That doesn't really change the cost that much, but there has been an increase in the cost. Uh, the town administrator and I the other day checked, uh, the, uh, capital reserve funds for both the Townhouse Bridge Capital Reserve Fund and the Bridges Capital Reserve Fund, and there are ample funds between the two capital reserve funds to pay our increased share. Now, I reviewed the language in that municipal agreement, and it is very similar, uh, and no major changes have been made to this one as opposed to the one that was signed in 2019. Uh, what I would, the last thing that I would wanna say, why I wanted to come today, is the sooner we cha- get this signed and get this back up to DOT, the sooner it can go to the governor and council meeting. Uh, and the next one, we missed the one on October 29th, but there's one coming up on November 15th. What that means is that we can go into the design phase, and we can lock in that amount. And the longer we wait, the more expensive the bridge is gonna be. Uh, so the design phase would start very soon after, uh, the governor and council ratify this agreement. All the other pieces are now in place, and then we can go on to, uh, preliminary design. And I, I really strongly advise that the board sign this municipal agreement as soon as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
No, thanks for your, uh, hard work.
My comments back to Bruce, at the time we reviewed this was, it's hard to even, you know, I feel that we have adequate money in our capital reserve funds, but it's hard to s- say that with 99.99 certainty when you don't even know what the price of this new car is gonna be. So I was kinda shocked that they're asking us to agree to it, yet they haven't even completed the design yet, because the design could change the cost. For instance, you know, if, go ahead.
Well, the only thing that I would say is that in the municipal agreement, it does call out the type of bridge, the width of the bridge, the fact that it will have no sidewalks, those are all set in stone. You know, think, you know, the devil's in the details.
Right.
I get it. But the municipal agreement itself does set the price.
Yeah.
Uh, save the increase of 10%, which they may, they may levy on us, I mean, but we know what it would cost then. What's in that agreement plus a possible 10%?
Yep. And and it could go one of two ways. We could get a bid that could go 5% higher. You could get a bid for the actual construction, go 5% lower, and you have, and you're swimming in money. So we don't know till we don't know.
So how much did it actually increase?
This is gonna, no, I apologize for burying the paper somewhere on my desk.
Somehow my phone lost what I had in here.
Do you know what the projection, the the year, Bruce, they plan on, hopefully...
2023, construction start.
That's just right down the road now, right?
Right, that's if, that's if you're not in the sign.
We said two years ago.
Let's keep our fingers crossed and, uh, yeah, we...
Well, it's, it's good, because the, the number, the worst bridge in the state was the one I had in Hampton. And when I left, they said, we're gonna get to it, and when I, two years before I left, and when I left, it's 2027. So that's getting right to it, so...
No, we went up about $10 million.
All right, so, uh, sorry. I wish I had both agreements in front of me, but I don't have that. Here, here's my take on this. Uh, they've broken up, uh, the, the, the cost for the bridge into several categories. Preliminary engineering, preliminary design, preliminary engineering and final design, construction, construction engineering. Uh, and then they've broken all of that out into, uh, New Hampshire environmental costs, Maine environmental costs, right-of-way, right-of-way for Maine, right-of-way for New Hampshire, and then indirect costs. The local match for Milton is now $229,000. It had been $179,000. So there's the increased cost to Milton.
Fifty grand.
Now, I, I, I know the final design isn't done yet, but you s- you said, like, the width and the dimensions, everything is all set. Is it gonna be set so boats can pass under it? Do we know, or or no?
Well, there will be a public component to, uh, the, to the design process, where they will bring in stakeholders and abutters, users of the lake, of which I am one. And I may have the highest boat on the lake, so you're gonna hear me talk a lot about how high that bridge has to be. And you know what the real answer is? The bridge has to have the bridge clearance that the old bridge had, period.
That wasn't much. I don't even know if a boat could pass under the old one, could it?
Well, I had, like, this much at high water. I could go under there, and that's how much clearance I had.
Some clearance is better than none, I guess.
That's right.
Okay, that, that, I was just curious, that's all.
That was with all the beer on that he could hold.
All the beer, all the people.
Right.
Six people.
Be clear.
Perfect, good enough. Couple inches is better than none.
Yeah.
Good enough.
And and see, that's my concern, is that this still has to go through the design process? process? For instance, if you ask them to add it up a foot, well, then you also have to take the ends and bring up by a foot. And that's my concern. So until you order this new truck from Ford with all the accessories, we don't really know how much this, but we have well in excess of $229,000 in these combined accounts. And assuming that we're going to continue chip, i.e. add into that, we're, we're going to be, we are in a good position to continue to enter into the agreement, keep the ball moving forward.
Yeah, I, I say do not kick the can down the road, just let's, let's move forward with signing the agreement.
So you just leave have the agreement available?
It's, I think he sent it to me electronically and I just never.
Is it one signature, Gina?
Pardon?
Is it one? Because we, I can make a motion to have the chair sign it if, if.
Your agreement.
One, one, okay.
But do all three selectmen have to sign it or?
I believe they have, they have three selectmen signature lines.
All right. We'll print it and leave it in the inbox.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get it done.
The signature bin.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry for the, not backing you up with the paper.
Okay, so moving on to old business. Yes, okay, so old business, thank you, Bruce.
Thanks, Bruce.
Old business, fiscal year 2022 budget review with the police department, recreation supervisor of the checklist, trustee of the trust funds, town clerk, tax collector, administrator, and moderator.
There were certain individuals that wanted to know if ladies could go first. Michelle, you have the floor.
So what kind of format are you looking for going through this? So do you want to hear the same way that we did it through the budget committee? Or you just want to ask questions because you've already seen it?
Let me see here.
I'm going to check my notes, being good. And we've kind of gone through some of this on the budget committee as well.
Okay, have I just go through a gazole and take me like 10 minutes?
Yeah, that's fine, go right ahead.
Okay, so the first item that you see on the proposed budget for 2022 is the part-time salary for the 25.5, the full-time salary for 39.950. And I think, and then you have your salary for electric. And I think, Chris, you took all those numbers from, based on experience in the new pay scale, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
For the full-time position in the.
Part-time.
Part-time, right.
Yep. And then, so we have 6.2% is the FICA, then the 1.45 for the Medicare. The training line includes the spring workshops for your new town clerk and tax collector, your new deputy.
Hold on one sec, Michelle, please.
Yep.
So under part-time employees.
Yep.
How much money are we asking for part-time?
Yes, 25.5 there.
25,000?
Yep.
Here, right now, your space looks blank because this is the copy that, and by the way, it also says three part-time employees. She doesn't have three part-time employees.
Well, no, but.
It's just an editing thing.
But I thought we, I thought we were.
Go ahead.
By, by getting one full-time employee, we get away with.
Two part-timers. And now all you have is a floater, which is who's working with me right now. She works one to two days a week, if she can.
But prior to, but when we had a full-time employee, how long was she working?
One, one day a week.
One day a week.
Yep. You have to remember, you're going to have a new town clerk and new deputy. They're both going to need training. They're both going to need to go, at least one of them is going to go and get certification. So this, they're going to be gone. Someone needs to be in this building.
Oh, I totally agree with you. I just, I just, I just think that, I mean, just, we'll look at it. I just think the 25,000, it wasn't that much last year when we.
Well, the default line on the part-time last year was 39, 6, 37.
Well, yeah, but that's when we were, that's when we had three full-timers. No, no, three part-timers, but they were here, you know, one or two days a week or whatever. But, but we got one full-timer now for 39,000, for 40 grand.
And you don't have, by the way, you do not have a full-timer right now.
No, I know.
Speaking clearly, you have an open position for a full-timer.
Right.
No, okay. I didn't want, I didn't want someone at home to think that.
No, I know, we don't have a full-timer. It's just, we need to look at the 25.5 because that's number, to me, is high because.
I think your first year, you're going to need it. Maybe not your next year, you should reevaluate with the, the new town clerk, tax collector, but I guarantee you that all the people that are coming into this building are going to need training.
Oh, no, I, I agree with you totally. So, all right. This is just preliminary anyways. We're just going through this.
Yeah, it's just going to be hard the first year.
Yeah.
And Michelle and I have had discussions, she has reached out to, there are, what did you call them, floater?
Floaters throughout the state that are existing town clerk, tax collectors, that are going to be willing to come in and help train your new, your new people.
But not at minimum wage?
No.
True.
Okay. And that's where the, under the part-time, that's where they'll be paid for.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I'm fine, you can continue for me.
Okay.
Okay.
All set.
So for, that's for the training, you have your spring workshops for the new town clerk, tax collector, your new deputy, the annual conferences for the new town clerk, tax collector, and the new deputy, and then the certification program, which is a four-year program that the town clerk, tax collector will, will go through. The registry of deeds is $700, we kept that the same. That's for recording the liens, the lien redemptions, and then, of course, the tax deeds. The legal notices and ads, we increased this year, it was 150, we increased it to 250, which is what we're actually spending every time we advertise for an open position. The professional services for $13,400 includes the tax program through Avatar, the interwear program that we use online to do registrations, dogs, transportation, decals, beach and boat passes. Also, we budgeted for three elections for next year, four elections for next year, three that we know of. One is going to be your town election in March, then you'll have your state primary, I believe, is September. And then your general election will be scheduled in November. We always schedule for that one extra special election so that we're not left hanging by a thread at the end of the year. We also budgeted in there for Sanders Searches, that is the company that we've been using for the past 10 years. She does our research for liens and deeds for our deed notices to see who's holding mortgages on what properties or, you know, other kind of liens. Then we have the new part that we've added to professional services this year is the, I want to say it was Mailway, but it could be a different name, because we went and got bids for estimates for what it would cost to have our tax bills sent out twice a year and someone else stuff those envelopes and do handle all of that. So we're not relying on volunteers to come in and closing down the office.
I was going to ask you about that. So that's in here?
It is in there.
Oh, it's nice.
Yep. We also included in that line the P.O. box for the town clerk and tax collector, which is one P.O. box, $200 for notaries, because I, you're probably going to need two new notaries in that office, and then background checks, we budgeted $100. Under the line for printing and copies, we just left $1. I highly recommend that you leave that there. It was easy for us the last couple, couple of years where we have found online services, we have great relationships with some of the dealerships who will give us the information over the phone. You really should leave the dollar in there for your new clerk to see if the new clerk would like to purchase those books and have those available. The supply line, we budgeted the same as we always have in the last couple of years. That includes the actual paper, three-part paper that we use for our tax bills, our dog tags, our printer cartridges, printer drums, envelopes, labels, file folders, binders, storage boxes, business cards, and anything and everything under the sun that you need to have on your desk. For postage, we did increase that by about $900. And that's really, that's taking into consideration the amount that we won't be spending for tax bills. Our postage line is going to increase. We did have a hefty chunk of a refund from the state during COVID for our election absentee ballots. We're not going to get that this year. And we've got two coming up, plus our own, and the postage fees have gone up. So we're going to get hit with that. The postage line covers, of course, the absentee ballots that I was talking about, the increased amount of motor vehicle renewals that we're doing online. It includes sending out the renewal notices for reminders, the DMB work that we send out, beach passes, boat passes, vital records, dog licenses, everything that we send out through the office. The equipment maintenance line is the same, it's $300. It used to be $600, but because we have two ballot machines, one belongs to the school, one belongs to the town, we agreed a couple of years ago that the town will pay for ours and the school pays for theirs. And it's just for them to come in, they make sure everything's running correctly, test it to see that we have no issues. The equipment purchase is for the $1,000 for if we do the safe replacement. I have been searching, trying to see if I can find one right now for that amount, and the answer is no. So what we might have to do for this year is encumber what we have in there and apply it to next year's budget so that you do have enough to purchase a new safe. And for mileage and travel, we only budgeted $250 since there is a vehicle that will be available to the town clerk and tax collector and deputy. I'm just assuming that 250, we're leaving that in there just in case it's already being used by somebody else that car's been used. For our membership and dues, we pay $20 a year for the New Hampshire Town Clerks Association and we pay $20 a year for the New Hampshire Tax Collectors Association. And then miss lane is for $1.
So does it say what, what the, on here, how this is broke down from last year? Oh, yeah, it does. I just had to see, okay.
Yeah, the total, it isn't broken down by department.
Oh, yeah, okay.
That would be on your computer spreadsheet.
Okay. All right. No, I mean, my only, my only question really was just the part-time line. You know, I'm not going to kick a dead horse. It's just something, I mean, like I said, this is just preliminary, we're just going over this.
Well, it's going to come up in the third non-public item that I'm.
Okay.
Trying to discuss with you.
I think next year, that's probably something you could drop down, but this year, you're really going to need people to come in and train your new people.
Yep, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful evening.
You too, thank you so much. And. All right, do we have, who would like to go next? Want to go next?
I'm not sure which, are we asking, do you want to go through everything? Trustee and the trust fund budget is a watch, it's the same exact budget as, has been, there's no changes at all.
I just said no.
Right. Yes, keep going, sorry.
The supervisors of the checklist, which I also do, has changed because, as Michelle just pointed out, we went from having one election last year to having three set elections and one possibility of a special election. So that whole budget, the difference in some 2021 budget to 2022 is $31, because we had, last year was the 10-year purge, which we had no idea how much that was going to cost. So we did put a little extra money away, so the difference of budgeting for the three kind of was washed out by getting rid of the $250 that we had extra in postage for the purge last year. So the difference in that budget is $31, and that covers, like I said, three elections plus one special election, if it arises.
Okay.
And then Parks and Recreation, the only change to that budget is the salary line.
No, I'm fine with that, with supervisors. It's just something that you really can't, you know. It is what it is. And it's only gone up 31 bucks, so. So you're on to Rec?
Rec, and the difference is the salaries increases.
Okay, and that's it?
Everything else is across the board. Okay.
And now, and, and we're, we're now doing bingo again and we're back, back up?
Um, a big thing is, is basketball, and I'm not sure what we're going to have the ability to do. I remember we were talking, Diana and I, about what the actual schedule last year. Well, it dawned on me, we weren't allowed in the gym until January, and that's why our program got postponed. And I talked to Judge Dye Shoot today and they just closed the building down yet again. He said there were 12-plus positive cases and 131 contact exposures to COVID.
Right.
So we are at, totally at the mercy, what we're going to do is open up the basketball program and take registrations and just sit on it till we can find out if we can get in there or not. We'll do an in-house program, no charge to anybody, and we'll just let the kids in when we can at the gym, have fun and play basketball.
Hopefully, you know, they, they'll let us use the gym, I mean.
Well, the, the deal is if the school's closed, we have no access. Not even, it's not even debatable. They close the school, they close the school. So we kind of get everything organized and sit in the background and wait till we get the go-ahead. And you know, the fire captain is staying with their own kids, Wakefield is staying in-house as well, but would be willing to play games as long as there's no outbreaks in either community. Rochester, not sure. I don't think anybody's doing a league this year again because we're at the mercy of using these schools. But we don't own our own gym, so we can't make the wild stuff.
Okay.
And everything else is up in.
All right.
Right, and we had a super spectacular, I think it went really well. Next thing on, so the biggest thing is winter carnival coming, and we've set the date already for Valentine's weekend 2022.
Okay. And you're doing a Thanksgiving meal for the, for the seniors?
Yes, I am.
No, thank you very much.
Apparently it's on me, if you can take the day off, I'll be back.
It's, it's possible, but not probable, but.
Do you need like turkeys cooked offsite and brought in?
Well, we, what we've been doing the last few years is just doing the turkey breasts, so it's pure meat, cut it up. It's just way easier to handle, way easier for them to have. So yeah, so if you want to donate some boneless turkey breasts, absolutely.
All right, yeah, we can do that, I can do that.
Yeah.
Can we just go back to the recreation budget? Because I'm on the budget committee and I might get in trouble if I at least don't mention some of the suggestions that were made. So on the line item for printing, let you see that. Printing, printing at $200, and these are very, so this year with the budget committee, it seems like we're doing a more detailed cleaning up type of thing, looking at expend, what has been expended in the past, comparing, you know, to what's on the budget today, like, has it really been expended and really does it need to be on the budget? So this was one of the things, this is just what was brought up by the, the committee. So their suggestion was to go from 200 to one, $200 to $1, because there, it hasn't been expended.
It does get expended, they just don't take it out of my line. It gets expended through the upstairs printer a lot of times.
So that's one of the things that we.
It was supposed to be something that they can take, they would take to cover some of the, because when we print in, in a lot, it goes upstairs because we don't have the capacity on the small one to do it.
Yeah.
So it does get expended, it just doesn't get taken out of my budget.
Right, and I think that was one of the things that Humphrey was looking into is how that, how we need to like streamline the costs of the printing. So that was just one of them. So the other line item was the electric, it's at 2,300. It was suggested to bring it down to 2,000.
I'm not sure what the, with the increased amount of electricity, I would. I'm not sure what, with the increased amount of electricity, I wouldn't touch it, to be honest with you, I can't predict.
I'm, I'm just the messenger.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I'm just saying, I don't think this is the year that I would.
And I know this is going to be some things that'll be discussed at our meeting with the Budget Committee, but I just wanted to share that with you before we got to that, so.
And bringing that back to, I mean, I have suggested all the cuts from, suggested trimmings, if you will, from the Budget Committee, but I work for you, and you tell me what you want me to trim back. I mean, I thought my first task was just at least bringing a budget that was below last year's default, which, okay. And any further trimmings, you know, should, should either.
This, like I said, this is just recommendations because we're doing comparisons over the past five years with the expendable items and what was, you know, what the average expensed items were, and seeing that there is a lot left over, so that's all that this is.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean that has, has to move.
No.
This is just some of the recommendations from the committee.
I just don't know what the projected increase to electricity is supposed to be for 2022.
I, I agree.
And then, what do we do if there's not enough money to pay it?
Well, this is a good thing that we're, we'll be discussing. But this is just, like I said, I'm just the messenger, sharing what was discussed. And the last thing was the equipment maintenance at 200. No, I don't.
But doesn't, isn't that equipment maintenance, that's used for various?
Anything, anything that goes wrong that we'd have to have looked at, yeah.
No, but I, I think that one was more of some, of a line item to move versus reduce, so.
Move it to what?
I, you know what, I don't have that part, so I'm just going to leave that one alone.
Because that equipment maintenance line, you use that for, for other, for three budgets, right.
The equipment in the office downstairs covers not only recreation, but trustee, the trust funds, and supervisors of the checklist.
Yeah.
It's like we just need to purchase a printer while one line was not enough. We had to go to all three budgets to cover the cost of that printer.
Yeah.
So, and that's what happens, if something breaks, it helps divide it into three departments.
Okay. Well, those were just the items, very small, but I just wanted to mention them.
I'm all for trimming, but, trust me, I am, we're all taxpayers in this room, most of us. But the electricity, I, I can, I can understand. I mean, unfortunately, my, everybody's light bill went up, it seems like last month or the month before, we all got hit hard. And I just don't, I, I just don't, you know, that's probably one line that I'd probably, I'd probably leave alone, but we can talk about it.
Yeah, no, I definitely just sharing the information. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, perfect. All right, so who do we have next? Chief?
So, do you want to go through line by line, or do you want to just start with what the Budget Committee wants to talk about?
Um, let's see.
I mean, because I know the Budget Committee brought up my education line, my printing line, and I believe those are the two, is that correct, Chris?
Yeah, pretty much.
And I think mileage was the other item that I had.
Mileage was the other one, correct. I think a total they wanted to pull out of it was like $600 out of my budget.
Yeah, I know, it's, they're, so what they're doing is they're looking at the expended items over the past years, and that's why they're looking at ways to reduce.
So, the problem with looking at the expended items over the last five years, I haven't been full staff in five years. I've been in full staff as a chief of police maybe a total of eight months in the total time I've been the chief of police. So, I create my budget with being at full staff. I don't create my budget at, with the expectation that I'm going to be short-staffed and I'm going to be 40% without, without 40% of my officers. So, as much as looking at a five-year plan and how much we expend over five years, that's great, we can look at a five-year thing. But if now, we're not looking at the aspect of the fact that, okay, well, he budgeted for eight full-time officers and two part-time officers, and he's had five full-time officers this year, he had six full-time officers last year. And if you look at that five-year window, you'll see why we didn't expend those numbers. If we had all of those officers, almost all of that would have been expended. The, if we just go to the mileage and travel line, it's at $1,100. In two weeks, we're going to spend $600 of that, just sending one officer to one training. And it's because I can't give him a cruiser for a whole, for two weeks to send him to 10 days' worth of training to drive from his home to Pembroke every day in change of his place of, place of work, because that's what we're doing by sending him to that class for 10 days. So, we're going to spend 600 of that, $1,100 for one training. So, that's why I've never changed that $1,100 since I've been chief, because if we have to, when we send these officers to those trainings, when we're at full staff, I like to send my supervisors to Roger Williams University, which is in Rhode Island. We have to pay mileage for them to go there, we don't give them a cruiser to go to Rhode Island with. So, then we have to pay mileage for them to get there and back, that $1,100 doesn't even meet that standard. Thankfully, there's a grant from the academy that will help offset some costs, but it doesn't offset all of it. So, if I take that $1,100 and drop it down, I think they wanted to drop it to $800. So, we drop it to $800, and we now have to find the balance of that money in some other line. So, we're now cutting some other line short to say that we saved $600 from the possibly proposed budget.
And all honestly, I, I totally agree with your budget, because I know that you have done a great job with, with making sure that it's not over, and I understand the staffing issue, and that's certainly something that the Budget Committee has taken into consideration. These are just recommendations, so.
The other line I know they wanted to keep status quo is the educational incentive. So, with the officers that we have right now, I believe we spend all of that $4,500. The officer that's in the academy, when he comes out, he's going to put us over that $4,500. The two positions that I need to fill, of just the applications that I've received so far, at least three of them have college degrees. So, if any of those three get hired, then we're over the $5,000 that I'm trying to budget for, for next year. But that's already a line that I'm already setting myself up to be short on by only setting it at $5,000.
Okay.
The printing line, the printing line is underspent because we don't have the officers. So, we're not buying business cards for officers that we don't have, or not. And I don't buy business cards for officers until they're out of the academy and off probation. So, I'm not going to spend money on buying business cards for somebody that may not be here. I don't think there were any other lines other than those four that they were looking at.
Right, that was it, I just had the three, printing, mileage, and education incentive.
Okay.
So, while we're talking about this, the full-time salary line, I do have one certified officer that has given us a resume. So, obviously, my full-time salary line may have to be changed for next year because what I budgeted for is an entry-level employee, not for a certified employee coming in. So, I budgeted so that I have enough money to have an entry-level person that would go to the academy and not a senior experienced person coming into the building. So, obviously, that number would have to change so we don't set ourselves up for failure. Because obviously, if we're sending someone to the academy from January till April, May, then we're going to be spending some, some overtime while they're there to fill and cover that position.
Okay. Great.
So, that, that line unfortunately may have to increase a little bit.
Along that line, I have to ask the board, so, I hear many times from various department heads that they don't want to expend their, exceed their department's line or their department's budget. As the TA, I don't see it that tightly, I see it as there's a lump sum given to the whole town, and that if salt is down, sand is down, other little things are down. If we give him approval to, let's say, put on that, a full, a fully-trained officer versus a newbie, for lack of a better term, do we in fact have to increase the budget, or can we recognize that for the last 10 years, we have never, ever expended the full amount of the budget?
And it's, it's somewhat a philosophical question, because if, if, if we can say that each budget, each department is reasonably funded, and that we're all in this together, then you could reasonably say, for instance, instead of Michelle, Karen, and I as moderator funding for three elections or four elections, we could fund for three, as long as we understand that if we get the mandate to have that fourth election because someone either passed away in office or resigned, like what happened a couple of years ago, the minute that happened, alls I heard from everybody was, you don't have it in your moderator's budget. And I was like, too bad, we're still having the election, because it was mandated by the delegates to the county. In other words, you've got to face the music. So, if, if we can, from a, as I say, from a policy perspective, if we can admit that, you know, we'll have, we recognize we'll always have something that won't quite live up to what was, you know, required under the expenditure, then we can trim down to three elections. We then don't have to, if, if only, let's say he needed another $10,000 or $12,000 to go from the part-time to the full-time officer, we wouldn't have to, because you recognize the fact that, A, it'll take him three weeks of salary, you know, to get, there'll, there'll be, there'll be pluses and minuses. And that's somewhat what I hear the Budget Committee getting to, is if you haven't spent for that fourth election over the last five years, why do you really need it? Well, we need it because alls I heard was whining and moaning, and we did need it. And, but, it's a philosophical question, it's not a yes or a no question.
Well, it's a bottom-line budget, realistically, you can't rob Peter to pay Paul.
Exactly. Right.
We've done it, we've, we've froze budgets before, if, if we think it's that bad. For, for good reasons, but, like Matt said, it's a bottom-line budget, and, you know, we control, you know.
Philosophically, right, you do, there's one part.
The destination, so.
And that's what I've told all these departments, there's one pot of money, don't give me that. Um, you know, um.
You know, and, and fortunately, I mean, for the most part, you know, the department heads do a great job, so.
I would agree.
So, you know, there's really never been a, you know, that great of concern, so.
I think a lot of things have been cleaned up over the last year, and this is just kind of really nitpicking, so.
Well, and, as much as I understand where the town minister is coming from, I just don't want anyone to get into that mindset that there's one pot of money, so my department can spend as much money as they want, and we'll just pull it from another department.
Oh, no. Well, that's not going to happen.
And that's not what you're saying, I understand that, and I don't think any of the department heads that we currently have would have that view and have that opinion and want to do that. But, that doesn't mean I don't retire in a year and a half, and you don't get another chief that comes in and knows that that's the mindset of the town, and just overspends his budget to the point where we'd have to find it somewhere else, is or.
Well, I'd be damned not to.
And, so that's.
It's not going to happen.
That's where you run into those issues of having that mindset. Thankfully, we all look at it as, nope, this is my block of money, I cannot go over this block of money, I need to stay under this, and I need to make sure that I stay under it, and I accomplish as many tasks for the residents as I can accomplish with that block of money. And if it's fixing a server this year, instead of putting it on a Warren article next year, okay, well, I have this extra money, I'm going to fix the server, not push it out. I'm going to do this, I'm not going to push it out, I'm going to do this, not push it out. And that's what I've tried to do for the eight years I've been chief, is to not keep pushing more out to the residents if we already have the money over here to correct it. And I, and I think that's what you're wanting to do, and that's the route you're trying to go towards. I just want to make sure that we're not.
It's only a current philosophical position as long as we're all still here.
Correct, as long as the group that's here and has the mindset we have, has that, that view. Because otherwise, we could run into a, a big mess that we don't want to be in, and that the town doesn't want to be in, where we have to have a special, special election or a special vote to go into the general fund, pull money out to try and cover what we've expended that was not allowed.
I would agree.
Yeah.
Okay, but, thank you very much.
Yeah. So, we are doing, like I said, we are doing our hiring process now, so.
Yeah, so those numbers change, or you need an update, please let me know.
The PT test is going to be on the 13th of November, so, and we're going to do an oral board the same day to try and speed up the process, so I'll have a better opportunity before your next meeting to let you know if the number has to change or not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks.
All right, we're all done with the budget?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, other business that may come before the board. Okay, approval of minutes?
Yes, you have one second, Madam Chair. There are no non-public meeting minutes because you approved those as you entered into those the last meeting. The only thing you would have is the minutes of October 18.
Well, you know, I've read them, you guys also, I'll make a motion to approve the October 18, 2021 minutes as written.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. Apparently, I can't vote and write by name at the same time. Here you go. Thank you. Okay, public comments pertaining to the topics previously discussed?
Yes.
Okay.
Larry Brown, out of sympathy for my colon fingers and my Scottish love of inexpensive printing costs, if you have extras, it's the stuff I gave to you, give it back to me. There's more work the school board needs to do. What I wanted to bring to your attention particularly regarding the discussion you had on lighting, regarding the discussion you had on the bridge, and regarding the discussion you had on the police chief's budget. As a member of the Budget Committee, I was at the same meeting as the, as the chair, and she is quite accurate in terms of the work that the Budget Committee was trying to do into reviewing the yearly costs as they affect the present cost of an item. The figure of $2,300, I forget what it referred to, but the figure that Humphrey came up with was about $1,800 on average. Adding 10% as an override to that is where, comma, I believe, comma, bog carriers figure came from. As to feasibility, if you have that paper, you will see down at the bottom, you have technical, economic, legal, operational, and scheduling. Those are all the things that are going to apply to the, to the bridge. Chris brought it up, where he said, one foot, one foot higher is this much longer. That, that is important. One small thing, if I remember correctly, the standard deflection of a weight-carrying beam is 1/240 of the beam, am I right?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Okay. That, um, for the, for the weight of the front floor, nothing says you can't put in a steel-carrying beam on an appropriate cross-section for probably eight thousand of dollars. Last, last comment. This has to do with, uh, two, two-eighty-three. And, uh, I have a list of ten names for you, to see how many you know. John Snow, Edward Jenner, Ignots Semmelweis, Albert Saban, Jonas Salk. None. John Snow, the pump-handle color and inferior in London.
Oh, I thought he was the guy on the snow removal. I know Salk, the guy at the end.
Edward Jenner, smallpox, Ignots Semmelweis, childbirth fever. Albert Saban, oral, oral polio vaccine. Jonas Salk, polio vaccination. Five more names. Bob Enyer, Mark Berner, Phil Valentine, Jimmy DeYoung, Dick Faray. Recognize any of those five names? They are all fierce anti-vax opponents, radio personalities. And if they share one thing in common with the first five, all ten are dead.
Thank you.
Okay.
The last five cards.
Alls I will have to, alls I got to rebut on the, on your conversation, Larry, up there, is about the bridge. You know, moving forward, we have to live within our means. And if the bridge, you know, whatever bridge they come up with that will work, that's, that's going to cost the town, whereabouts, where the money we're at is where we're going to go. Because, you know, we, like I said, we have to live within our means, so.
May I? When the, when the bridge, um, at the dam might end, I recommended, uh, a pedestrian walkway. Chris knows from his, his work as civil engineer, you don't put in a sidewalk, you put in additional bike way and sweet path, so that the truck can take it out. Wouldn't they go for it? No. You have, that roadway has the potential for being, uh, a scenic byway. I just don't, just don't have a walk, walk, of course.
Right, yeah, no. It's all good points.
Thank you for your additional time. I'll make one more.
Thank you.
Our report?
Yes.
Uh, we received an email from our auditors, Melanson, asking the town to look for a new auditor in future years. Uh, their specific email to me read, "Hi, Joanne and Chris. We look forward to closing out our audit of calendar year 2020 financial statements when we receive the information requested in prior emails. Receiving information needed to opine on our 2020 financial statements nine to ten months after year-end is resulting in our inability to execute many of our engagements in a timely manner." Apparently, we're not the only ones. Accordingly, we suggest that you seek the services of another firm to perform your calendar year twenty-one audit." That came from them. To that effort, we've reached out to our previous auditors of Vashon and Culque and Company. They would like to have us back as a client. They're going to prepare packets for the board to consider at your December sixth meeting.
Okay.
If you desire me to put it out for a wider net, I can, but, uh, it appeared that for a period of ten years, we were satisfied with their work, and, uh, there's nothing in the file to determine why, under Heather's leadership, we made a change, so. Let's see, Brittany and Joanne have reached out several times to the state DRA to determine a date when they'd like to set the tax rate. We have not received a response. Our MS five thirty-five report, which was the last document, has been uploaded to DRA since mid-September. Our last communication to DRA was October twenty-fifth, so, and we're not, they are short-staffed, but we are not understanding why they are not even responding to email inquiries. Uh, so I don't have a good date for you as to when and if we would be setting the tax rate. Uh, last week, it was discovered that a number of property transferred, approximately about a hundred, had not been entered into the system. Sue Serena, our assessor, called in another assessor, and working over two days, they got caught up. The number of documents that had to be entered wasn't assessed that thick. It's on, on the backside of her desk. The importance of those is that if we had not entered them in a timely manner, and we did set the tax rate, you'd have to, you'd literally have bills going to the wrong people. Properties not currently have to assess value, a host of other things. It would have created a real mess. Uh, the tax-dedied parcel bid is out, and it's available on the town website. Bids due November twenty-ninth. Uh, the surplus property and vehicles bid is out and available on the town's website. Again, bids due November twenty-ninth. There was a recent posting on the social media, the town was not doing anything with regards to complaints previously received regarding thirty-nine Ripley Lane. Uh, the town took the parcel on, in late September. We're currently working with our town's legal counsel to have the current tenants removed from the parcel. Now that the issue is being handled by legal counsel and then the police department, the town is limited in what it can say about the matter. I'm trying to respond in this public format to something that was on social media. If residents and other interested parties have concerns about any issue, we respectfully request that you call, email, or write the town, rather than demean the reputation of the town on social media. I wouldn't normally respond this way, but they called me out, so.
Well, and, and those three, so.
Jennifer King of the Three Ponds Protective Association would like to arrange. I'm just trying to go through this quickly, because we have a public, a non-public to get to. Uh, sorry. Jennifer King of the Three Ponds Protective Association would like to arrange a presentation to the board. She has a date in January that she'd like to do, the open dates, I told her, were the third and the seventeenth. And it has to do with water quality and what we in Three P, Three Ponds and the ConCon and others can do to, uh, to well-work together.
That's her number. I'll give that back to you.
Oh, yeah, Jen, good. Yeah, I wrote it down on another document, so I didn't lose it. That's all I have.
Okay.
Flurry, I know.
I know, um, our next meeting is November fifteenth, but I also want to state that, um, the Budget Committee and the VOS will be meeting on the eighteenth at six o'clock. I believe it's a Thursday, so we can go over the budget together. Okay?
Yep.
Okay, um, any other comments from the select, select board?
Uh, I just got one question. How many, how many of our, of our town buildings use heating oil versus propane? Any of them, do we know?
I don't. I thought it was the library and us, uh, because I know the fire station's on gas, the police station's on gas. Not sure what the wastewater treatment plant uses for interior in the building, if I can ask.
What does the highway department use?
They burn waste oil and wood.
Waste oil and wood.
They have burned a lot of wood in the past.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah.
As far as like LED lighting, police, fire, uh, highway, and, um, they've all, in this building, I, because I popped a couple of the fixtures, they've all had LED, uh, upgrades since.
Yeah, we, we had a big study, and these all got changed, um, so.
Because when I asked about the oil, I thought it was a multi-building contract, and he said, no, it's just here, so.
Seven thousand gallons just here?
Sounds like a lot to me. Yeah.
Because that, that's, that's what I was getting at, because I was just, I was just rolling through this and looking at all the numbers for heat, and they add up to like, I forget, fifteen grand more than that, more than the oil contracts.
I think he's paying, he has other things that he's, yeah, paying for. Probably other propane bills and other things.
Yeah.
But I can ask for a breakdown, too.
Good question.
Because that's just, it looks a lot.
Yeah, I would agree.
Well, and plus, this furnace down here is on its last leg.
Seven thousand gallons is, seems like an excessive amount of oil for one building.
I know it's an old furnace. I know that there's a lot of issues down there, and I know in the capital improvement plan, they, they planned on changing it, but.
Now, is there a, um, is there a, uh, a bulk contract for the propane for all the other buildings?
There was, uh, for the one at the police department, and the fire department did them earlier this year, because, with Eastern, because again, it was a, ending of twenty-one and going into twenty-two contract. Those are the only ones that I've been aware of, that I've brought forward to the board. Uh, it's a good question for me, for May, to ask Pat and have him get back.
Okay, Andy, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I just want to, you know, just throw it out there, uh, you know, we did have trunk or treat, it went well. Thanks. I want to thank everybody that participated, that came down to the town, uh, beach and, and, uh, made all the little kids happy, because they certainly was. So I just want to, it, we had like eighteen cars this year. Um, we, the Chief of Police, uh, decided, you know, we should, well, he made a proposal to put it onto the beach itself, which worked out great. Gave more parking, and, you know, my dream is, um, really to fill that beach up with cars in the future, you know, for trunk or treat. It's fun, so, um. I do have some weird dreams, but, uh, I just like to, I like making kids happy. It's, it's, it's a joy of mine. But anyways, so we had fun doing that, and thanks, everybody, um.
Sorry, I missed out, but I was busy with my new grandson, so.
Yeah, no, it's fine. No, no, I understand. And I do, I do want to thank, um, the crossing people who always help out during trick-or-treat. Got a lot of good feedback on, you know, for all their help, so I just want to throw it out there. You know who you are. I unfortunately just don't have your names. But I do want to say thank you very much for helping the, the police department with your, uh, helping the, the kids across the street. So, thank you so much.
Great.
Other than that, I'm done.
Excellent, and so am I. So, um, I believe that's, um, you have a motion to adjourn the public meeting?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now we'll be moving into the, um, non-public meeting, according to RSA ninety-one dash A three two C.